I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Is this one, um... Can you hear me? Can you hear me? There we are. Alright, so is that good? Can everybody hear me? Excellent. This is, uh... I'd like to call this meeting to an end. The break of day scheduled meeting of the Wunsackit Education Committee is Wednesday, September 26, 2018 at 7:07. Dr. McGee will call. Chairman Seal here. Vice Chair Borje.
Here.
Mr. Lima.
Here.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Here.
We are all present. If we could please stand for a moment of silence. Let us recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Is there anyone here? Well, if there's anyone here who would like to speak, uh, under Good and Welfare and Address the Committee, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna make, uh, a motion to do things a little differently tonight, so we have some recognitions and announcements. Uh, so I propose that we do all of the awards first and take a brief recess. So that people can enjoy some of the refreshments that we have, congratulate each other, um, and then, you know, five or 10 minutes later, we'll resume with the recognitions and announcements and move forward. So we have second, uh, all in favor signify by second. Aye. Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Dr. McGee for your question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is probably the most exciting night of the school year here in Wunsackit Education Department. This is the opportunity that we have to recognize our incredible employees of the year. So if the committee will join me in front of the tables, we can start the evening. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna start the program tonight by announcing, I'm gonna announce the Administrator of the Year here at the Wunsackit Education Department. Before I announce the Administrator of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and some quotes from nominating staff. Some quotes that describe this administrator include the following. He demonstrates an unmatched ability to create safe, effective, and empowered learning communities, both inside and outside of the school. He communicates with parents and families, motivating them to become more invested in their students' academic success. He, along with his team, created a strong sense of community which has resulted in unwavering intrinsic motivation, leading students to demonstrate the habits of success that would serve them well beyond the classroom. This administrator is always willing to listen and learn from his faculty and students, and in doing so, has developed a creative and innovative instructional model that inspires students and teachers to maximize the use of digital resources as they successfully shift the paradigm of teaching and learning through personalized learning. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2018 Wunsackit Education Department Administrator of the Year, Mr. William Webb. The next award goes to the Wunsackit Education Department Teacher of the Year. Before I announce the recipient, let me describe this candidate's achievements, characteristics, and some quotes from nominating staff. Some quotes that describe the Teacher of the Year include: She is creative and fun, and her bubbly personality is infectious. This teacher is structured yet flexible and extremely organized. This teacher often goes above and beyond, and her enthusiasm gets her students excited to learn. This teacher also has great school spirit, whether it be dressing up for Spirit Day or special events like Dr. Seuss's birthday, or to relating different events to classroom lessons. The genuine love this teacher has for what she... Sorry? For what she does and for her students is very evident. If I could handpick any teacher for my own children, hands down, it would be her. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2018 Wunsackit Education Department Teacher of the Year, Ms. Melissa Bouvier, second grade teacher in a whole new class. You can never take too many pictures. She looks forward to you sharing them with all her friends. The next award goes to the Paraprofessional of the Year, Wunsackit Education Department. Let me read some quotes that describe this paraprofessional from nominating staff. This paraprofessional goes beyond, above and beyond, will at all she does, and steps to the plate when something needs to be done at school. This paraprofessional uses her lunch and free time, prep time, to read to the students that do not have teacher assistants. This paraprofessional has perfect attendance year after year, and has been very dedicated to the students and staff. This paraprofessional makes our students and staff feel safe and loved. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2018 Wunsackit Education Department's Paraprofessional of the Year, Ms. Nancy Landini.
Does she get to talk, she'll be in a room as well?
Not with these legs. I don't even talk about it.
Alright, smile.
I'm gonna hold it until it comes apart.
All these legs.
You're in good shape?
I am, yeah.
Next, I'm gonna recognize the Clerical Employee of the Year, Wunsackit Education Department. But before I announce this person, let me describe some quotes that describe her from the nominating staff. This clerk is an unsung gem and brings a lot of fun and sunshine into the workday. This clerk works tirelessly with excellent attendance in her job. She has amazing patience while fielding calls for people and steps in when the acrosspayable supervisor is on vacation. Interesting. And lastly, the office is not the same without her smiling face and sharp whip. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2018 Wunsackit Education Department Secretary, Custodian of the Year, Ms. Linda Summers.
Alright. Couple more times, boys and girls.
So, Dr. McGee, before you let her go... I've had the pleasure of working with Linda since I started here. Uh, she's been a model employee, as Dr. McGee's pointed out, but she has a few other clerks as well. Uh, I'd like to point them out right now. She does consider herself a princess, so if you wanna go ahead and put that on here. Here you want here. Hairbrush in a mirror. Spends a lot of time at her desk brushing her hair. I wanted to re-up her equipment. Here we go. Next, I'm going to announce the Custodian of the Year. But before I announce this person, again, let me describe some quotes that describe her from the nominating staff. This custodian works diligently every day. To say that she is a hard worker will be an understatement. Rarely do we ever have to ask her to do anything because she anticipates our needs and gets everything done. She's on top of everything and makes sure the school is sparkling clean and everything is in good working condition. When asked to do something, she does so immediately with a positive attitude and with a smile. This custodian has developed a good rapport with staff and students. It is clear that she takes pride in her job and in our school. Overall, she's a wonderful, hardworking individual who deserves recognition. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2018 Wunsackit Education Department Custodian of the Year, Ms. Donna Rondo from Kevin K. Coleman Elementary.
Can you ask all the ladies to come up for one group picture so we can put it in the picture?
Could all the recipients come to the stage so we can take a group photo? Please?
Leave your crown, please.
Yes.
Bring your crown.
Put your crown on your shoulder. You know, put it front page, Paul. You're the princess.
Four years. Sorry. Why don't we take a brief recess and Chef Paul brought his best chowder. We are back in session at 7:45. It is slowly, maturely quieting down up there. There it is. And we have a long, we are gonna continue at 7:45. Uh, it's Dr. McGee, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to just, uh... No, I'm being reminded that we need another roll call after her absence of that period of time. Chairman Seal here. Vice Chair Borje.
Here.
Mr. Lima.
Here.
Mrs. Gonzalez. Uh, before we continue, can we just have one last round of applause for the people who... And then also for Chef Paul and the wonderful soft... For those of you in the back who I talked to, please remind Chef Paul that in Rhode Island, we do also appreciate clear chowder, so, um, I don't know what that red stuff is, but, clear, clear chowder. I'm obviously just joking, you do a fantastic job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to recognize Chef Paul and the incredible Wunsackit area career and technical center, culinary sleuths, they just do a tremendous job. And I thank you again for being here tonight. Like to thank, yes. I'd like to thank Landmark Medical Center, their very generous donation backpacks, school supplies, and hand sanitizers to the Wunsackit Education Department. Thank you to their staff, their kind contribution, and for ensuring that our students are equipped for the school year. Would also like to thank Performance Physical Therapy in Wunsackit for their very generous donation of backpacks and school supplies as well for our students. This year marks the second consecutive year that they have provided our students with the needed supplies to be successful in the classroom. SDEXO School Services is ready to begin the 2018-2019 Backpack Program. The goal of the Backpack Program is to eliminate hunger on weekends by providing the students with non-perishable food in bags or backpacks. Through this critical program, we are able to provide backpacks filled with nutritious and easy-to-prepare foods for students who are at risk for hunger on the weekends. Backpack food bags are discreetly distributed by school personnel on the last day prior to a weekend or holiday vacation. We ask that they return the empty backpack to the school after the weekend. The Backpack Program is provided at no cost to the Wunsackit Education Department. The funding for much of the food products is provided by the SDEXO Foundation. Food is also donated by SDEXO Wunsackit employees, Wunsackit Education Department employees, and from Wunsackit Education Department students canned food drives. SDEXO's Backpack Program is dedicated to alleviating child hunger in Wunsackit. Please feel to contact Alan Schalbe, SDEXO General Manager, should you like additional information regarding this wonderful program. She can reach that 767-475. On September 14th, I attended the Reducing Chronic Early Absence Event at the Rhode Island Foundation. The event, which was hosted by Rhode Island Kids County and RYE, provided attending districts with national as well as statewide attendance data, and back sheets, and best practices from school districts in Rhode Island. The presentations were very informative and provided those in attendance with ideas to help decrease student chronic absence. As you know, Wunsackit Education Department has been working very hard to decrease chronic student absence over the past two years. I'll be speaking a little bit more to that during my report. On September 19th, the Wunsackit Education Department hosted its kickoff event celebrating our being awarded $725,000 from the Rhode Island Foundation at the Museum of Work and Culture. The three-year grant will include working, partnering, following organizations: Better Lesson, Generation Citizens, Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, the New England Base Camp, and Teach for America. Governor Gina Raimondo and the Rhode Island Congressional Delegation joined the Rhode Island Department of Education in announcing a $9 million grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to support stronger mental and behavioral health services in Rhode Island. Wunsackit is one of only three districts to receive funding to implement an anti-violence and drug prevention program totaling over $1 million. Wunsackit will receive $360,000 a year for the next three years to develop policy and implement prevention program, and provide support to students in socio-emotional learning. And finally, this Saturday, September 29th, rain or shine, the Wunsackit Education Department will hold its third annual summer reading celebration event from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the grounds of Wunsackit Elementary Schools. All Wunsackit elementary school students who have completed three summer reading assignments are invited to bring adult to an afternoon of food, games, touch a truck, and fun to celebrate your hard work. These students' accomplishments deserve to be celebrated, and we look forward to celebrating that on Saturday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. McGee. Would any school committee member wish to comment on the recognitions and announcements? Hearing none, I'll make a motion proceeding, place on file the recognition and announcements into a second. Second made by Vice Chair Borje. All in favor, signify by a second. Aye. Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Onto the approval of minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the September 12, 2018 closed session minutes. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Would anyone like to make any corrections? Hearing none, Dr. McGee will call. Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borje?
Yes.
Mr. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Any closed session minutes are approved. I will make a motion to approve the September 12, 2018 open session minutes. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Any corrections? Hearing none, Dr. McGee will call. Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borje?
Yes.
Mr. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez? And the open session minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda, would any individual wish to make... I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Would any individual, uh... Would any school committee member like to take any items out for individual discussion? Uh, I'll take out the appointments. Actually, I'm not gonna say anything now. Anything? Alright. Uh, Dr. McGee will call. Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borje?
Yes.
Mr. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Do we have any teachers here that were appointed tonight? We have one. Is that the principal you're gonna be working with? Did she warn you that you're required to give sort of a five or 10-minute brief synopsis of your teaching philosophy?
Yes.
She did? Are you prepared? Alright, well, thank you, and welcome to the district, and we wish you best of luck. Thank you. Oh, and we have the, uh, the new clerk from Coleman Elementary as well. I don't know why we're clapping, and she hasn't told us, you know, what her, uh, her philosophy is. Alright, congratulations, thank you very much, we look forward to all the help you can provide our district, thank you. Uh, that is the end of the consent agenda. We have no communications, no school committee reports onto conferences and discussions. It looks like Mr. Natariani is gonna be standing for a very long period of time as we go over the technology and facilities updates. Uh, we'll start with the technology. Getting your computer to work. Don't worry, we're all watching and waiting, right? Yeah. Dr. McGee said this better not be a switch problem. These jokes are all in fun, we only make them because we know how to take it.
We're laughing with you, pal.
We would never, we would never want somebody to fail. Uh, please, sir. I get made fun of all meetings, so we're on the same page.
So my first update for the evening is about the technology update, which is on a regular basis. Seeing the standing rapport of teachers, if they're not lying, I'll report. This is the beginning of the school year, so just wanna emphasize that with the beginning of the school year, we're gonna see a higher number of work orders come into the system.
Can you go over to the microphone, please? Sure.
So we have a higher number of work orders in the system than we did at the beginning of the school year, and I find this an impressive number. We had over 800 work orders today over the last four weeks, which is the highest volume we've ever incurred here. However, that is not actually bad news, and I'd like to be encouraging this because as I look through the work order system, a lot more of the work orders have been beyond, you know, I can't print, or I think on the internet, and now we're looking to the phase where it's that, what are we doing with that technology? So the teachers are putting more orders in now, okay, well, now we're seeing some of their systems, such as DreamWorks, in some of the instructional programs that are out there. So it's a very encouraging thing because of the fact that now we're getting questions as to what we're doing with the technology. So as you can see in the report, we closed out 653 work orders, several, 47 were declined, there were 38 new and 36 assigned. new and 36 assigned, 29 resolved, several progress duplicates and whatnot. If you look at the second report, probably assume because of the large volume that we're above our normal average response time, which is traditionally about two days to get a work order completed, I expect this to go down as time progresses. I also remind the committee that we only hired our third technician two weeks ago, so we can barely spend two weeks alone with one empty vacant. And the last report, as always, is the customer satisfaction report. There are totals at the top, I did go through and look at them. Generally, when we get dissatisfied with a customer or dissatisfied employee, I email out to them missing clarifications to why they may have been dissatisfied. I'll remind the committee that sometimes they're dissatisfied because though we fixed something and it didn't work out, we had to go back. There are times where they're dissatisfied because a decision hasn't been made, and for example, recently I had a staff member ask for a piece of equipment that we don't normally even provide, and something that we're not purchasing for the classroom. They have to put your work orders, they've both time to decline both times, they were dissatisfied, but they were dissatisfied with some of the decision, and not necessarily the service that they received. So we try and reach out to staff and make sure we distinguish between dissatisfied with the service versus not happy with the decision. In addition to the work order system, we also provide support for the construction systems. You can see in the memo, we've outlined, we've brought on Star for the school year, achieved 3,000 elevation, which is a new system that Dr. Rumpf has brought into the district, Greenbox, a new system that Dr. Rumpf has brought into the district, Greenbox, Study Sing, Ready Gen, Stemsco, Summit, Project Weibo. So all those systems feed out of our student information system, and there's theories at different grade levels throughout the district on our floorbooks. Below that, you'll see a listing of all the federal state data reports and the data submissions that we've now initiated and started to get to send out to the state. So you can see we have some of our enrollment, discipline, student attendance, staff attendance, teacher course, student exception, term, career technical data. So all of those systems are now brought online and recorded to state on a daily basis, which is what's expected of the district. And that ties it down to where we'll see votes about state funding and what not. So that more or less is the pertinent information for technology today.
Any questions related to... I'll make a motion to proceed and place some problems in technology update. Second. Made by Vice Chair Borje. Okay, this is made by my side.
Aye. Aye.
I propose the ice habit. On to the facilities update. Do you want to combine the facilities and the WAC tech, or do those separate?
I prefer to do the second one, Chief.
I don't have any facilities I'm sure related to the...
So this is the first facilities report I've delivered to the school committee. So this is what I've interpreted that you would like to hear if you'd like to provide any feedback at the end, just something else you'd like to hear about. So I structured the memo similarly with the technology. Just like the technology department, the facilities department uses a work order as not a system. In fact, the workflow that comes in for our facilities and custodial staff. Just briefly, there are two distinctions, differences. Facility staff, they clean buildings, they maintain the infrastructure, they prepare the repairs, they coordinate the ventures. Custodians, clean the buildings, keep them clean and safe, you know, throughout the school day and evenings for staff and students receiving instruction. So the work order system is structured the same as the technology departments, and I included the same reports. So while you're going to see some similarities, there are also some distinctions that are very important to the state. You know, we've been having a comparison here. Work orders come in to the system on a daily basis. They're only allowed to be seen in the facilities by principals, secretaries, and building custodians. Which means we do that is because the facilities infrastructure is also keeping it safe. So we want to make sure that the main office is always capable of proof as to what is going on in the building. If we have a weekend, and a teacher just requests a leave, or something's going on in some communication, and the main office doesn't know, that would be a good situation. So we make sure that all of our faculty and staff, the people that are in the office, they coordinate the facilities, the department to respond. You're also going to see that the numbers here are not as great as the technology numbers. That doesn't mean they're any less busy than the office, when in fact they're more busy than we are, but both buildings need to be. And I'll just note right now, for example, so I'll just point out here, you have 12 buildings, you have one plumber, two electricians, and three other utility workers, all the groundspeople, and who have certain different functions. So it's a slightly different comparison, I'll make sure that's stressed. As you can see in the report, over the last 90 days, I'm sure that what 90 days could encapsulate the timeline and ways over the disposition as to what it's a trend by for the entire summer. And basically, more or less had approximately 500 work orders submitted into the model this summer, which is probably less than maybe the moment we get over a school year here, because this is a summer and staff are not in, and they're inefficient in what's being reported on this day. So you can see they have 273 new work orders, these resolved 67, they were assigned 51, some were closed, 20 enclosed, some were waiting to amend as a contractor. So a lot of work that comes in sometimes is something, for example, right now, we don't have an electrician on staff, we have two people that are out. So as a result, we have to contract with an electrician. So a lot of the work, the electrical work gets pumped out to an electrician to come into the work. Also, I want to say that because we're responding, sometimes it's a safety issue, or something needs to be done immediately, and it does happen, we try not to, but the staff sometimes just respond. If there's a leak, we can't sit there and say, oh, wait a minute, let's go see the work order. Phone call goes suddenly, oh, they respond to whatever leak is with the plumbing. Sometimes it gets missed. So in fairness to them, I don't know if this network captures everything they do, but does a pretty good job as to some of the things that they typically respond to. So as you can see, based on the work order system, that's the count of what's coming. You also see that, like, the average response time is just 15 days. I would say that much like when we talk with technology, where we say sometimes it's a work order, and sometimes it's something that's in as a project, there are things that are in the work order system as I went through it, analyzed it, realized that this is really a project, it's not something that's something the facilities can all do right away, it's something that we're going to have to plan out and take care of over a period of time. So I do want to say that while I threw that in, because they're used to seeing that with technology, I'm not sure how valid that number is in terms of how they're responding to bees in one of the classrooms, or water seeping in some area. They actually have a pretty good response times when it comes to a specific emergency.
Is it possible to split it up between sort of exigent work orders and maybe more routine work orders?
So we're looking at how we're going to do the process. It's a very large operation, and it's something we're just trying to get people familiar with the fact that we use work orders and setting expectations. So there, Dr. McGee and I have met with the staff, it's not just me and Dr. McGee, but we're 100% away by my side saying, here's the level of expectation we have, and so we're kind of changing, you know, culture and the problem. We haven't received much response back in terms of satisfaction with the work orders. I'm happy to say the only response we've had back is three people have been very satisfied with the work that was completed. So I can say, you know, I think they've done good for the response.
No dissatisfied people?
Yes. Yes. So we do need to sit down and figure out how we're going to capture the difference between a work order, the endless project, we need to kind of follow some processes for that. Not only that, it also ties into some of the capital and how we're going to finish how all of this works. I mean, some of the buildings here are new, and some of the buildings here are quite old, and everything's a problem every day. So I will say my observations from the staff is they are doing the best they can with what we've given them, and with the number of staff we have to maintain all we can.
So if a teacher has an issue with a leaky or broken window, but it's not something that like water is gushing in, but, you know, in the winter, maybe it's very drafty, or whatever it would be, and they want to get that fixed, that goes to, how does that process work, and what's the vetting or the decision-making process to decide what gets prioritized for repair and what doesn't?
Well, interesting you ask about windows. So we've had some of those that are cracked here in the district, and dependent on the shape of the windows and what we've done with them. This is something we can do, do an inventory of everything that's broken, have a company come in and repair all the windows across the district. If it's cracked, like it's something simple that's just happened, usually when you close it, you find it cracked, you can call it the main office and contact some facilities. We have staff that helps, that can fix it. If it looks like they're stuck doing a bigger project, we might contract to the company to come in and fix it. I can't speak to what we do in the past, it's how we're handling things now. I will say that we have had some vandalism, which we've had to address right away, but again, it's just something, if they report to the main office, again, I think the most important thing...
So I was just, the window is like an example, but I mean, it could be anything, but, you know, teacher has the door that sticks, or just, when a teacher has a complaint?
They report to the main office.
Okay, and then how is that decision made that this is something that needs to be handled now, soon, or never?
So similar with technology, they submit the request to the main office, the main office is the work order, and based upon the principal's discretion, they're going to contact me, and this is what they would deem an emergency in their building. All of these things, the principals are not going to call me, because they've put very good judgments, so this is really important to me in my building, but it's not an emergency versus, oh no, here's what it's impacting, and then they're going to place a phone call to my office and say, I need someone out here right away. And then from my perspective at the district level, I look and say, okay, there's twelve buildings, and I've got this emergency here, and this one here, this one's important. They're saying it's an emergency, but in comparison to this one, it's not. And then we allocate the resources based on that process, because that's the most logical way we can do it, based on the limited amount of resources we have. So I think the key thing to managing any type of work order was, is the communication piece. And you can certainly ask the principals, well, those that are here, they're willing to call me at any point in time on their cell, we can now get these together.
So principals are empowered to sort of be that first line of judgment as to what should even be submitted?
Correct.
So a teacher could have an issue with something that the principal says doesn't warrant a work order at this time, and not submit it?
Well, they would still be encouraged to put the work order in, but just they'd be encouraged to classify it as, you know, low level, medium high, critical. Even if they, you know, mark it critical, they're still expected to call and say, hey, I need this coming into my cafeteria. So, I mean, for example, like, say at the high school, say, like, the man trap, the security system failed in there, that would be something, they'd call me and I'd say, all right, we've got to send someone over, we've got to fix this, I mean, you can't have security not working, or, you know, that's how we would address it. Also, so aside from the reports there, we also deal with building usage. So we've seen approximately 25 building use request forms, those come from outside organizations, and that all this filters through the building principal, they sign off to make sure the building or area is available in the building, and that filters up to McVeigh. We cross-check all the paperwork, make sure that they have insurance if it's required, we're going to have to pay for it, custodian, make sure that that's all outlined, that gets signed off, and then gets sent down to the buildings. That's a process we're looking at, which kind of deals with technology. We're looking, and I talked with Brad, we're trying to find a program that can manage our building resources. They're out there, I've seen examples over the past, I've never had any use, call them in the smaller districts I've been in, but even larger ones, even being in this particular world, that's something that we're looking to do so that we can kind of manage these resources if we will across the entire district. And then I have another update before that I want to drop down to transportation. Just briefly, transportation also is a larger operation, we have our own school services that provide transportation, we've been in constant contact with them to make sure that the bus is running on time, their contract's up to renewal this year, so their private cities are trying to step up, they came to compress us to see if they can renew it or whatnot. But we have, we see also some requests for transportation that also come through the office, so if you live outside...
You're citing requests for what?
Request for transportation. So if you live outside the boundaries set forth by the school committee policy, there is an avenue for a parent, if they feel for some particular reason they need their child to receive bus services, there's a form they fill out requesting bus services, and they have to justify why. And based on those circumstances, the initial vetting process goes to the director of the facilities and transportation, who assesses that, and then makes a determination. If it's an education need or medical needs, it's a slightly different process, because obviously that's a little factor that I wouldn't weigh in on. But if it's just, you know, I live just a tenth of a mile outside the boundary, and I have small children, or whatever the circumstances, that comes through that office, and if people have been denied, then there's an appeal process. So we have received several, some of them have been approved based on the circumstances outlined, some of them have been denied, and they want to be appealed process, and I can tell you, two that have appealed so far have been approved based on those circumstances. So the appeals process is made over the transportation director, the two building principals. So that's where we are with transportation. So then the last piece that I want to update you on here is, did we see the letter last week that I had to offer the manual management? It's included in my updated packet here, just notifying that we are butters to property... We're butters to property, and so the high school, Great Tech Center, that may or may not have some chemicals in the ground, and they have to create a remediation plan, and they have to cap the property. So as a what, as we were required to be notified, which we were, I sent them a letter, and they sent us a response back, which I've included here in the report, which is something that we're monitoring, and we want to make sure that you're kept aware of. That's more or less it for the report. I mean, in terms of transition from last year to this year, I had several meetings on some of these projects that were going on. He left quite a bit of notes and documentation, actually, there's predense of all those files laid out on it. So if I have any questions, usually I go in there and get the raw, I can actually find the back-up details. I want to see Dr. McGee, he's an area excellent in terms of assisting me in training and gets it this way. Any questions? Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Can you update us as to the custodian situation, as to how custodians are supervised, and how we're monitoring their performance, and cleanliness of the buildings?
So this summer, we instituted a, let's say, probably a slightly different program than we have used in the past. We created a checklist of each classroom, each area in the building, outlining the areas of expectation in terms of cleanliness, starting from the ceiling all the way to the floor, including the light fixtures, the walls, windows, whatever. Each room in this, in each building in this district had a form that correlated with what was cleaned, it was signed off by the custodians, and kept in a binder for the principals to go back and reference when the school started. So that was more or less the process we used to monitor this summer. We did meet with the custodians in June, Dr. McGee and I, and the custodians, union leadership met, and what I would say defined what our expectations were going forward in terms of what we were expecting. So, you know, each person, each director or leader has their own ideas, you know, different set of eyes looking at different things. So we felt those best, and we clearly defined in fairness to our custodial staff what we expected of them for this summer. So we more or less monitored through the checklist. I'm already traveling around the building anyway for technology, so now I'm interested in that technology, I can happen to look through and see things, for example, lights that are... Oh, again. So those are things that we just kind of jot down, and we go to particular custodians, we emphasize cleanliness, probably some areas maybe that, you know, they could do some additional training. We've identified some equipment, so one of the big things I learned from today, and even the periodic was identifying, do you have anything you need to do your job? Do you know what you're supposed to do with the equipment we provided you? And do you have any questions or anything that we're not aware of that's going on that might require you to do your job? Because sometimes we would just say, this is what you're supposed to do, and they don't think to say, well, I can't do it because of what's required, because they're too worried about why they can't do it, instead of communicating. So I like to think that we try our best to communicate. The union leadership for 1137, so Mr. Turner and Mr. Lengen have been excellent to work with, good in terms of communication. So so far, my experience has been, we've received a lot of positive feedback from parents that I've spoken with, in terms of the job that custodians have done, and I think it's just a matter of accountability, and again, a different set of eyes looking at what's been done over the years.
Who's accountable? How are they accountable? I mean, we saw this summer, we did our work for, it was late summer, early September, we saw, pause that, you know, Max stole the dirt, right? We saw this. My question was not, you know, if they needed protocols, they needed a book, they need... But now, here we are, almost in... But now, here we are, almost in October. Who's reviewing the work? Not just them filling out, I mean, we just review a book is one thing, but who's walking the floors of each school to determine whether or not the job has been properly done? And then the next step, what's happening with that?
So that's a joint effort between myself and the building administration, building principals. They know their building the best because they're buildings.
But they're doing it.
So they are doing it. And every morning, I drive around the district for an hour, and I really walk through the buildings. I don't get every building every day, I try to, but spot check different things. There is, it's funny, I find that for the most part, there's a great deal of pride here in this pocket, based on what's happened in the past here. And it kind of shines through. People come forward, people say, you know, we need to do this better, or here's how we could do this better. So I think the combination of the building principals, working myself in, and just that pride in this pocket, I think a lot more is going to get done, I think a lot of it is going to get done. I think some of the things that you can share for it was just a lack of respect. I think some of it is contributed to the fact that there were years of, I don't have a, probably don't have that word, but neglect, based on the fact you didn't have funding to take care of some of those things. But I think a lot of the things that we see here can be remedied just with some hard work, and it's going to take a little bit of time. If floors were not taken care of for seven years, you're not going to clean them and get them spotless and shiny. If you wax over the dirt and you've done that for seven, 10 years, that's not going to get cleaned in one summer.
I'm just glad to hear that, that not only has a protocol been set up for processes and procedures, but now you've got in place a supervision function to make sure, so you can focus on the custodial aspects of each building, not just the repairs, I mean, you're looking at that piece as well, that may have been neglected in the past, for whatever reason. And all of that, I'm just going to hold it out.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone? Right on time. Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Anyone else?
Well, I just, I actually wanted to say that Kim is the director of technology, now you're the acting director of facilities, and you're the director of the job. We're really proud to have you on our team. Those are two huge departments, and you're the new lead.
Thank you, sir. You should thank the staff here, you have really good dedicated staff. There have been many, still is out, Mr. Plan, Mr. Tito, there are, there's many more, Mr. Trudeau, you see here, there are some really dedicated people that have some pride in your district, and they go above and beyond. And I know you see them all, but they really should be recognized, it's not me, they're kind of guiding me as to what needs to be done, so, but thank you.
In that vein, Dr. McGee, do we have an expectation of what a position we felt?
We have put together a job description. We have been working on the job description because we have come to the agreement that moving forward, the safety and security component would follow the technology, because a lot of that needs to be taken out. So the position, the facilities and transportation, I mean, it's a big job, you invite, you know, there are many districts out there that have facilities director, facilities and transportation, transportation is there, it really is. So now that we've put that together, the process of working with our part-time HR director, people to get that out to schools, to other sites that, you know, get the most qualified candidates applying. So to answer your question, no, it's not, it's not been posted yet, it's going to be posted very soon.
Anyone else? Uh, all pick emotions received and placed on file. So did update is your second, second made by Mr. Wurzay, all ears focusing, aye. Aye. Both ears have it. Whack tech update, Mr. Datariani, the floor talks.
So, Dr. McGee, would you step in?
I'm going to head out now. I'm just sorry, if you don't mind, Mr. Chen, I'm Mr. Datariani, and Mr. Webb is here also this evening, now that we can answer any questions that the committee may have as well. So just an update, we, as you know, we moved all students and staff out on Tuesday, September 18th, and right now, first of all, that move went very well. We had a company that came out and anything that was tagged to go from Career Center to the high school, it was clean thoroughly, and it was protected, relocated into the areas of the high school. Some of the more challenging departments at the Career Center, automotive, culinary, and construction, Mr. Webb and each of those teachers together, did some really strong plans, so that, for example, automotive, there is an opportunity for our students to work, to continue to work outside of their area at the Career Center without having to go in. It's not the same thing, it's not the same, I'm not going to, you know, try to make you believe that there's been no change, but there are things that they are able to do outside of their area, and they're going to be able to utilize some storage, some large storage containers to store those pieces of equipment. After school hours, obviously, they'll have to go back to the facility and retrieve. There are also support areas outside that are established for the automotive students and instructors to work. Culinary chef Paul has been utilizing cafeteria at the high school, getting a direct relationship with the excellent chef Shelby, and now has offered kitchen to the program. We also are in conversations with Rivers Edge, they have the location, the location that they just opened, about maybe a year or two ago, which is their museum for culture. They have a kitchen there that they offer our students and our staff to provide also everything, so they have good options as well. Construction, Mr. Myers has projects that students are working on across the district, really, a couple of projects, one specifically, they have Povier Elementary, where they're developing, basically fixing the, there's a shed on the campus, you know, we can, there are also some sandboxers that are part of elementary that they're rebuilding, reconstructing as well. There are other types of projects that will be given while they're outside the Career Center. The other programs at Career Center are important, computer-based programs, those are a little easier to transfer into the high school. We did a variety of things there, some programs, like the key tech program, which is housed there, first, Florida Library, there, their curriculum is web-based, their software, so we actually moved all of those computers over to the library in the high school, so that they really haven't seen anything at all. And some of the other programs where they were more of a web-based, we didn't have to move those computers over, computers already here, computer, there are parts, a mixture of them, there are also, you know, all of those things. So in terms of the programs being moved over, if it's, I'm kind of looking at Mr. Webb right now, it's, we spoke again today, it's been about as seamless as possible. It hasn't been seamless, but it's been about as seamless as possible. You know, one of the conversations, one of the concerns that the committee had last time with the child studies program, and what we were going to do about that program and transportation. So since that meeting, we discussed the issues, we looked at Povier, and as you know, the recommendation at the time was to transport students back and forth, but that would take time, it would take up some instructional time, especially, not so much the instructional time, the child studies program, the instruction, and it's like losing in route back to the high school. You know, if they're going back to the math class and they're 10 minutes late, that happens by the end of the 10 minutes of their class. So we made the decision that that really was an option, because we guys have a problem with Povier. What we then did, I think it was a suggestion by one of the gentlemen that was here, that he was a construction company, was that he would look into portable classrooms, and we had had multiple conversations with them about that, they were able to try one potential portable classroom. They, I guess they searched for either, this one in town, this, but, you know, speaking with them, speaking with Mr. Datariani himself, Mr. Webb, also instructors in child studies program, they felt as though that particular portable that Mr. Martone found would not accommodate the program for a variety of reasons. And Mr. Webb, you want to speak to that? Obviously, as I said, Mr. Webb spoke with instructors, and that over there, and they shared with them some of their concerns.
So they moved, so, our biggest concern is safety and security, not only for the talks that would show up, but also for the students that existed in there. Right now, in the Career Center, in order to get to the child studies, you have to dump doors, you have to stack, there's multiple stack numbers there, then you have to go through their door, which is a thick wooden door, so just security, just to get one person into the door, you don't have that in this piece, you have a door. So you have that issue in there, we have students now that have to walk around the Career Center, to go back to the high school, so you talk about losing instructional time, they're walking down the pathway on the other side of the school, so you know there's going to be some slowness towards, some lackadaisical to get into the school, so they don't be lost in instructional time there too, should there be an emergency. At this point in time, we have the entire front office staff reports to, let's say, a lockdown or five. Our front office staff goes to child care. They all pick up their little duties, and they escort their students out along with the child care students and teachers, and you have to get their students with them. If there's a... We're 15 minutes away, 10 minutes away, at best, but 10 minutes away, we're in the other building, they're out there by themselves. So when we put it all together, we look at it, it's almost like setting up a sitting duck situation, you're setting up an issue where we're putting something there, maybe it exists somewhere else, but they had a year to establish all protocols that they need in place to make it a safe environment for everybody. We don't have that time, and we don't have that location, we're too distant, we don't have enough security around it, it's just not a real safe situation. To take our little ones and put them into that situation, never mind our own students, somebody has an allergic reaction, the teacher's on the road. Now, that teacher doesn't show up, now we have to stop there, what's going on? So now we have to take a teacher from somewhere, move that man, it's just not a safe situation. We looked at it, we really wanted to hopefully make it work, it's not a situation that I don't think you want your child, and I don't think I'd want my child.
So what are you doing?
Well, our recommendation is that we postpone.
Okay.
Okay? At which point, if we know that for sure, we have, the parents want to know, one way or the other. We believe we'll get, we'll get parents back. We also have parents that are within the school that were on waiting list, that would want to come onboard at that point. But to be fair with the parents, this is a situation out of our control. So this is a situation where we tell the parents, this is what it is, this is where we are, and our teachers at this point, who have connections in the industry around the area, can start making phone calls to help the parents place their students in a temporary bed. When we get back in, we reopen, we send the letters back out before we open, we know the date that we've got to be, you know, we're going to open the next date. Where we stop reaching out to those parents two weeks beforehand, this is when we're going to be in, this is we're going to be ready for you, and we'll get a roll call on how many there are, and then we go to our waiting list. When we pull up the waiting list, there's other teachers inside the building that have already talked to our teachers and said, get the opening, let me know. So I think in fairness to the parents, it's safety for not only the little students, but the older students that are there, and the teacher. You know, we could then put a plan in place, reach out to the parents, make that happen, help them find places to go, and then bring it back. We've been in business for 30 years, literally, we've never had an incident. And in that 30 years, the reputation is tremendous. So when you look at that and you say, okay, it's just like business closing down for a little bit and then reopening. They've got a great reputation, they've got great staff there, great support, they're going to be back.
What about the students who are going to be missing weeks of the experience?
So the plan there is that we students, normally 10, 11th and 12th grade students, 11th and 12th grade students go out into the community now and work inside our schools. So what we will start doing is prepping those other students, the younger students, to start going with them, buddying over them, and going in. So they'll still be getting those experiences under the supervision of a teacher and an older student, and then bringing them back, and then when we open up, we bring them back into the place. So they'll still get their experiences, the teachers already had a chat with the students that were in there, and, you know, maybe agree that, you know, normally there's like three days, I think I got this right, there's three days of working on the program, and then two days of theory, so they're going to buckle up on the theory now and spend more time working with the students when we reopen. So they're not going to miss, they're going to miss out, and it's not safe. But we've come up with a plan, just like the automotive, just like with culinary, just with all the other programs, we've got an idea to keep them learning, keep them on track, and what the plan will be after we're back in.
And so the transportation issue, they won't be missing instructional time after the time in the whatever elementary school they're going to?
No, no, that's already been worked out, we already do that now, it's serched around the lunchtime, so that way they're coming in on their lunchtime, leaving on their lunchtime. It's all worked out, they leave after they enter the program, and they come back before the program ends. And child studies are a little different, they run longer, longer periods, and they overlap. So it's a complicated little piece, but it works really well.
And when do we expect the project to be finished?
Well, that's the second part of my update. So we just recently met with Tracy Donnelly from RGB, and Tracy put the specs together for the work, and those specs are going to be released, bits will go out tomorrow. So initially, the six, eight weeks, last week, because of, you know, putting the specs together and getting the bits out, the bits will be out in four or about...
The bits will be out in 10 days. The next school committee meeting in two weeks from now, we will have a bit, excuse me, a bit in front of you, over.
So we're actually missing three? That's not even guaranteeing the contract from start of the bit to work, right? There could be another couple meetings?
Yeah, we're on it, 10 days. That's, well, I mean, we could technically shorten it, but there'd have to be a meeting to approve that R and B, the school committee, before we can go ahead anyway. I kind of think 10 days is as tight as it is to turn an R and B around. I mean, it's not a complicated bid.
So I ask a question, what was the reason for, you know, we have the solution, like right off through this, we're not concerned with the issue, why would we move all the students out, why do we wait for the construction to like to start?
You know, again, the information that we received from folks that we met with, from the vortex, just the testing, we have... from the Vortex, just did the testing, we have, we have a subcontractor that we've been working with, you know, for a few years on projects, capital projects, and a company that came in who actually moved the, the students and staff and all of their, their lobbies. Their, their recommendation, they gave us their recommendation, they said either vacuum them out or vacuum, spray that, the dust over it, do in sections or move them all out at once. And, you know, ultimately, it was my decision, we talked about it, you know, as a, as a leadership team, I, I felt as though ultimately, I would rather just go in and, and do it the right way. We, we were able to relocate students at high school, it wasn't as if we had to relocate them to a different building in the district. And I, I didn't want to just vacuum certain tiles, because the, the optic, optics would be, well, why are you going in doing that? You're saying that the air quality is safe, and the air quality is safe, it was safe, it is safe. I just felt as though the optics of keeping the students and staff in there, you know, that there is bold, albeit lack of, was, you know, was a good thing to do. And I also didn't, and I also didn't want to coordinate sections and work on, you know, a third building or a quarter of the building while students are still in there. I just felt as though the optics of that were not good. You know, we, you know, it's unfortunate, well, it's not unfortunate, we're going out to bid, it's something we need to do. You know, I think that ultimately...
We didn't need to do bids, we already had Martone block them. We've worked with a subcontractor.
We've worked with the subcontractor for, yes, he's, he's the subcontractor that we've been working with for a year and a half, he's done, he's, we've subcontracted with him to do the work in a lobby in a high school, to do ceiling tiles at the high school. He's, there's been many projects, so we went in initially. And so that, that's really how this all started.
If I recall from the last meeting, they presented, you had a plan of how to handle classrooms for the kids that were going to move all the activities to, from the Career Center to the high school, as well as what we're going to do in the outdoors, bring some of the, do the field trips, et cetera. That night, we voted 3 to 1 to go ahead and do it. So the following Tuesday, when we were moving these kids, in the meantime, from what I understand, the mayor's office came back to the school department and said, you need to go off the bids. And I read Steve Diggasino right on radio, which is not a bad thing, but I'm saying, why did we do it when the work began? Well, we're moving towards that, so that exodus, that transfer was occurring. And so now that we have to get the bids, although interestingly enough, it just voted on a whole bunch of windows that, that's avoided, which is comparable to what we're expecting to pay for this project. And here we are with an RFP, so you have to generate the RFP, you know, so now it's going out, that's why the delay. It's, it wasn't intended to be a delay, it was intended they moved and we were beginning to work. Well, that didn't happen. I think that's what realistically happened here. So now we're going to do the RFP process, and I think 10 days is a reasonable number of days, so that gets delayed, and here we are. Why am I thinking of that? I think that's what really happened here.
Is this going to be done before Christmas? I, I, I can't say yes, it's going to be done, I, I don't know. I mean, we were told six to eight weeks by the professionals. That was prior to adding in time for the specs and the bids to go out and for the committee to approve the bid. So I, I can only go off of what was estimated a week and a half ago, which was six to eight weeks. So I'm hoping that it is six weeks and not eight weeks, but I don't have a crystal ball to say for sure it's going to be done. I, I can tell you, what I can say, you know, for sure is that I don't want to move anyone back in until when the project is started, it's, it's done, and it's done, it's completed, and it's done to our satisfaction.
They don't stop by the middle of October, just a few weeks. It's very probable it's going to be done by Christmas. Everything being...
Well, before, before late at Christmas, I guess, the start of school.
That's moved.
Working outside, working, are we going to, outside this?
That I...
It's not here. When's the mid-year mark, September, January? Yes. So for programs like automotive? Are, are they going to, you know, are they going to be able to learn what they need to learn, given that half of their school year is not in the classroom?
A lot of their, much of their stuff in the first year is on stage also. So there's a theory in the meantime, it's not just one or the other. You know, knowing that it may be longer, same as we found the options for chef and kitchen that we have, we can start looking at their options for the, for the, I don't know what they are, but we can start looking.
It sounds like any of those programs that are dependent upon equipment and workshop space, you know, in the WAC tech, they're going to miss an entire half year of instruction.
They won't, because the theory that's mixed into it, they're already working already, they're still doing hands-on right now. So we're already a month into the year, you know, 26 days. So we're already a month into, you know, I think they'll be fine. We'll just have to make it work and figure out how to make it work. I could talk to the instructors, instructors are very knowledgeable in knowing what they need to do. But again, they're pushing things into this six months, into this four months, that would happen in the following four months anyways. So those are going to be placed with hands-on experiences. So whatever they miss now, they'll be catching more of it later on. You got 90 days of hands-on experience, this is, this is just numbers, and 90 days of theory, they're doing more theory now, they'll do more, more hands-on later.
Is there a possibility of moving students back into the Career Center after areas that they've missed? Or do they all have to be moved back in now?
Yes. It's not the third method, but you, you can't, yes, it's not the preferred choice that we went with, but if you do have the option, that we could work with the architects and the contractors. But I do recognize that in the committee, that with the exception of us going out to bid, we've received no indication from any of the contractors we've already had conversations with, along with the architect that's designing the RFP, the indication that it's going to go beyond the six to eight week timeframe that they initially estimated. So I actually make sure that that's clearly understood, that, that there's been no indication that that timeframe itself, once the work stops, is, is going to change.
Sure, but if we're not removing it until the second week of October, two weeks or eight weeks from that is the middle of December, where it doesn't take much of a slip to put us into January, I mean, that's, that is still, even the middle of December is essentially the entire first semester.
No, no, it doesn't change that.
So can we prioritize areas that should be serviced first? Like, for example, automotive area. Yep, so do we, so do we have a priority for students that need care?
We have. That is what I discussed.
The idea is they don't want anybody back in the building until they're done.
The idea is they can do it as quickly as possible as to not have anyone in the building. That's what they had articulated in the last meeting. We, we, so...
But even if it... If, if we're moving people back into sections that have already been cleaned, how, how does it slow it down? Like, I understand doing it piecemeal, one at a time, or one section at a time, might slow it down, but I, are they saying that magically the entire building is clean all at once? Because my understanding is that they prep one area, it, it's sort of done in phases, and so some phases would be presumably phase, you know, the third phase would be done sooner rather than later in some areas of the building than others.
The only viable option that, that I'm aware of, from understanding their, their discussions correctly, would be there, there are three key areas that they could or are not line first, based on the fact that the ventilation system for those three areas is sectioned off. And that would be auto...
So those areas that we're discussing, auto, culinary and construction are all fireproofed sectioned off, so they have their own ventilation system for each one of those rooms.
But again, they're indicating that we look at...
Just the building shut down. I, I get, I get it, but at the same time, we have to balance the speed of the project with students missing half a semester of instructional time.
Yes, Chairman, you do. And I, I think I can speak to the specifics as to why from a construction standpoint, they're saying it's going to slow things down. They could have indicated that in the last meeting, and I would have to have them back to, to explain that. I've also reminded the committee that we're now also putting, which we haven't discussed, and I'm not saying this is, something we have to look at, which is not going to have construction workers in a building with our students. When they say they're coordinating it off, they're coordinating the plastic, and they're going to be working in other areas.
Mr. Chairman? We're also having this conversation on having a clue who's going to do the job. We were originally having the conversation in the past, so committee, the way that it was presented and was, we asked them, oh, how long will it take? They're like, well, he just says, he does that, it'll take that. So we thought, okay, it's going to get, you know, we're going to vote, we're going to close it up, work is going to get started, and now we're waiting on bids, and we don't know if the next bid is going to stay six to eight weeks, or they're going to stay, you know, 10 to 12. We, we have no idea, so, I mean, we're having all these conversations, but we don't know who's going to do that. And we don't know if the process is the same with every company that they, you know, the company we talked to, talked to us about the process, how they do it, if one person comes in, and the next person does the second phase, and the third person does the third phase. We, do we even know that that's the standard protocol, and the other companies need to do the same thing, or, you know, we just, you know?
We don't, you know, we don't have a...
So I think we're, we're having these conversations that will probably change by the next school committee meeting, because we have no idea what's going to happen. I, when I voted, I thought we were talking about people who work before us, and that it was just a little right, school was going to be shut because work is being done.
So I guess, by the time we're voting on this, four weeks will, will last since we first talked about it. So I, too, losing essentially a month of time is a significant change, in my opinion. You know, being done in the middle of November is very different than the middle of December. And as Mr. Lea brought up at our last meeting, that there has to be another way. We just, we, we can't have kids missing that amount of instruction for that amount of time. I can't speak for everyone here, but I, I am not comfortable supporting the force of action that potentially keeps kids out of their, you know, natural learning environment for that period of time. So whatever the RFP comes back, I am not going to vote yes without something that discusses a way to get kids back in the classroom faster.
We're losing, we're losing too much time. I mean, Steve was right on, and if you had a pistol ball, it's what we'd be today. We really don't... So, well, we were not going to RFP the last time we met, because we had, we had a better end in play. Now we're going to an RFP, not a just changes the whole ballgame.
One, one of the, one of the time.
So I, I agree with the chairman, and I, we've got to find a way to do this project, and we've got to bring the kids in. It can't happen, well, sometime, we're going to lose mine by working outside the rest of time, I don't think that works. Oh, we're going to try to fit in, we've got to come up with a better plan.
We get it. And I'm not saying that I wouldn't vote for keeping the kids out the entire time, but I, I'm not going to vote if I can't also see a plan that gets the kids back in the classroom.
We can move back to the architect, we can do all the planning.
Right. So I, I'm not saying it happens, that is the only way we can do it, but it is going to be a no vote for me, if I can't see at least a plan that gets it back in the classroom.
My question was, when somebody submits a, a bid, will we go into bidding, does it go just to be automatic, lower, de-notice? You know, a bid for, you know, that information in the end is in the plan, because if you're going to, if it's going to be less expensive, but it's going to take three more minutes, you know, it's better to, to have whatever gets the kids in class, you know, that's what I'm...
Mr. Chairman? Yes. We can structure the bid such a way where it won't just be evaluated around price level, that certainly look at other factors as well. Time being, I think, the biggest one. So when, when we're voting next time, again, it doesn't have to be just the quickest way, but that does have to be one of the options that we are considering. Any other questions?
We'll be, we'll be voting on October 10.
We're voting on October 10.
So all the bids that we're going to go out, are at 12?
Last time this week, you said, I told you so. All right.
Information should change.
All right. With that, I will make a motion to see if we can place on file the back there.
Second.
Second, may I, my chair, Jorge, all papers, you're promising aye.
Aye.
So it's a delay, huh?
Oh, yeah. Stay over there. And it is passed. We have no unfinished business, on to new business. I will make a motion for discussion approval on the one side, we're supposed to... I will make a motion for discussion approval on the one side, we're supposed to type in for band director, is it second? Second, made by Vice Chair Porche, is any discussion? The only comment, I guess, I would have is, I think this is a good temporary fix, but I think we do need to, you know, discuss linking band director with the actual teaching position.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, and we have had that conversation, so we intend this as we move forward. I think in this year, as a strength, is that this, this band director in the general music position band, music will be one. So that future should, person who is in the position now retire, leave, would that position be posted? Should we hire someone that would be band director? Should this, that position, so I guess we have to talk about that.
Any other questions? Not Dr. Guehleko.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Porche?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
And it is up to... Next, I'll make a motion for discussion on the project for April, Project Aware, and to post percent positions, seconded by Vice Chair Porche. I'm seeing this as part of the grant. Yeah, so it's Jenny here, too.
She knows. She's not here this evening.
Just giving her a hard time. I know she doesn't appreciate that.
She's probably listening, listening in.
Yeah, she might be.
Get a text. Any discussion? And so this is also paid for out of the grants itself, correct? Thank you. Dr. Guehleko.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Porche?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
And it, motion's approved. And finally, I'll make a motion for discussion approval on the Project Aware, which makes an educational social worker, and a post for that position. So, seconded, seconded made by Vice Chair Porche, any discussion? Dr. Guehleko?
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Porche?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
And it also passes on to the superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each of you has on your Chromebook a, some chronic student absence data. I'm gonna actually use my hard copy, because it's easier for me to see. So, what you have here is from the first day of school, which was August 29th through September 20th. What I have done is, across the district, by school, by grade, I've presented you a number of students who have been absent two or more days within that timeframe. As you know, chronic absence, definition of chronic absence, first of all, is that somebody is a student's absence for whatever reason. So, chronic absence doesn't mean they're just unexcused absences. They can be excused absences as well, it's just that they're not there. And if you take the entire school year, just being absent two days a month, equals a chronically absent student. So, what I did is, and I'm gonna, as we move forward next year to the following, I'm going to be tracking the number of students, again, by school, by grade level, who are chronically absent. Now, if you go to the spreadsheet, if you go to that first column, that's the grade. So, the first school on the list is Bernadette, rate K for five. The far right column tells you the number of students in that particular grade. And at the bottom, it gives you the total number of students in the building. So... I don't know if you wanna take a second or so, sort of, to read that. I just have talking points here, I don't, to give you, wanna just...
Did you break them down by, do you have percentages?
I don't, I don't have percentages, these are just...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hey, certainly you can see by teacher.
We can break it down by, by teacher, by, you know, males versus females. You know, what's, unfortunately, it's, unless you look at Leo Sivoye, which is the lowest, which is on the second sheet, they have totaled 57 students. The numbers are high. I've had some conversations with practically all of the principals about this, because what, again, what you're seeing here, although these numbers are astronomically high for September, is there are, you know, I'll just give you an example. I spoke with Melissa Mooney, who's a principal of this, both years. And what she's done, she and her administrative team, and attendance, is they literally reached out to parents of the students who were known two or three days, and she hasn't contacted every single one, anyone she's contacted, and asked them, you know, "Why is your child absent two days, four days, five days?" In some instances, they were on vacation. And what she also did is she tracked at her school the percentage of students who were absent prior to Labor Day and then after Labor Day. And what she's found both years, a lot of students who are chronically absent miss the majority of their days before Labor Day. And after Labor Day, for the most part, those students are attending grade. Now, I don't know if that, I haven't had that conversation, I don't know that. I can tell you all principals have not tracked that. But I think it's interesting, because we start school before Labor Day. And I'm not saying that potentially starting school after Labor Day will improve our chronic numbers in September. But it might be something to consider, especially after I reach out to the other principals and they get me that same data. It's a thought, I'm not saying that, again, it's gonna solve the problem. But we, for whatever reason, there are a lot of students, and I'm just gonna focus at the elementary level, that are helping to sort them out of time. And the principals, as I just said, the principals, the assistant principals, the guidance department, the attendance officers, have a new attendance officer at the secondary level. They reach out to parents, they make phone calls. They, if they see the parent at the school, the parent's dropping the child off or picking the child up again, they'll have conversations with the parent. And there's a variety of excuses or reasons that they're not coming to school. But it's an epidemic. It's an epidemic in the socket, but it's also an epidemic in fashion. When I was at that conference recently, when I spoke up earlier, if you look across the country, I believe Rhode Island is number five in terms of attendance, and I'm not saying it's good attendance, but number five turns respect towards attendance. So, I'm not making excuses, I'm just simply saying that this is an epidemic. And here in the socket, we're doing a lot to try to reach out to parents and families to find out why are you missing school? Is there some assistance and support? At Leo Sivoye, and I believe Melissa Mooney was telling me at Governor Pope here, they're looking at installing washers and dryers, because there are some families that say, "I didn't send the school yesterday because we didn't have any clothes." And I don't just hear that in the socket, but I've heard that as I go to these conferences and I go to these workshops. You hear that in your more polished communities. So, it's reality. So, there are things in that, that's one example of something that, you know, some of our schools are doing, and they're reaching out and saying, "Look, if you have clothes that you need washing, burn them in, wash them, they'll get them back to you if that means that you're gonna send your child to school." There are a variety of other reasons that parents aren't sent, transportation is another. I know that in some areas, and we've had this conversation, I had this conversation with Melissa as well, that during the winter, whether it's snowing around or, of course, any time of the month, it's raining hard. There are, you know, many, unfortunately, single parents, or single moms in the community that have multiple children, toddlers. They normally would walk their child to school. If it's boring, and it's snowing, they don't bring the toddler because they're pushing a stroller down the street when it's snowing. So, there are a variety of legitimate, I believe, reasons for some of these absences. And then there are those that are just not sending their child to school, and they're not, there's no balance, reason on that we're aware of. So, as I said, we've been working on this. This is our, this is the second year we really, really, big, big push to reach out to families and to, again, provide the supports so that they can send their children to school. We're also gonna be starting a campaign, a attendance campaign. It's gonna be called, "Your Next School Meeting," and I'm going to pull that out. And that is going to, unless you, that's going to improve us just really saturating social media with messages to parents, to children. We're gonna be sending those out, as I said, you can include Facebook. Each of our principals sends out a weekly, what's news, email to all their families. We're gonna be putting a link on air to the video. Each of our principals, and some teachers, and even some students are going to be creating these thirty or forty-five second snippet videos to send out. I did mine today. And so, it's a complex problem. There's not an easy solution. We're gonna continue to do the best we can to try to provide opportunities for our students to come to school, and to continue to reach out to parents, just letting them know of the importance of coming to school. You know, you, I think there are folks out there that think, "Well, if my son or daughter is absent two times a month, it's heavily, maybe, don't return." But they don't realize that if it's consistently two times a month, that's eighteen days on a school day, that they're missing the instructional time. And it's not easy when you come back, because now you've missed three days in a row. You know, it patches here and there. You come back, it's not easy for the teacher to ramp them up and to get them the instruction they missed early course ago, so three days. Not to mention what that's taking away from the other students that are in that classroom, that are in those classrooms, that are, you know, have to sort of wait, if you will, for the teacher to sort of get them back to where they should be. And we all know that if students are not reading on grade level, like grade three, then the likelihood that they're being retained, and the likelihood they're not graduating from high school, the likelihood of them not getting a good game job when they're adults, just, you know, increases almost exponentially. So, what I want the committee to know is that we are, we do have plans. We have an action plan, and we create it, and we're continuing to modify it. But it's an epidemic, and we, we're just looking for any and all ways that we can try to turn the tide. But we're not gonna stop. We're gonna continue to monitor these students that are chronically absent, as I said, month by month. We have celebrations at our schools. So, it's not just calling a parent and giving them that negative comment that, "Where's your daughter been for the last three days?" Those are certainly bad, but it's more of, "How can we help? Is there something we can do?" We're, as I said, offering, provide celebrations. We, you know, we promote, obviously, students who are present and have perfect attendance. But our schools are also looking at those students who have improved their attendance, recognizing them. There are competitions within the schools, you know, from classroom to classroom, where the teachers post on the, on their, on your board, the percentage of students that were present. And it actually does turn into a competition, because there are students who, you know, they sort of, you know, I don't wanna say they bribe their peers, but, you know, it's like, "Hey, you know, you weren't here yesterday. Timmy, you know, we need you to be here." If you go into the schools, you're also going to see, more importantly, the parents are going to see data that come in that shows why attendance is so important. So that they're thinking of, you know, talking. Where, you know, there were a lot of things that we're doing, we're gonna continue to do. And as I said, we're starting this, be here campaign, which will, as I said, reach out across social media and across the community to try to improve, decrease chronic absence. We have seen an improvement in overall average daily attendance. We've seen that, and I reported that out to the committee, I believe, multiple times last year. So, we feel good about the fact that our average daily attendance is higher everywhere than it was even a year before. But the deception is that you can have a high average daily attendance, and you can also have a high percentage of students that are not in the classroom. And that's what we're really, we're really looking to, sort of, drill down to this year. Who are those kids, where are they? Why aren't they coming to school? How can we reach out to them? In the end, I hate to say this, to a certain degree, there's only so much you can do. We have truancy board, we have our attendance officers, and they've already started going in and having conversations with parents, students as well. So, you know, it's, it's a critical, very, 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 very situation right now. You know, everything we talk about, our test scores, and hence, the show and growth of every cessies that we, that we did, none of that means anything if they're not here. None of that means anything that they're not sitting in the classroom, receiving the instruction.
So, maybe with the bifurcation of duties, or the proposed, I should say, proposed bifurcation of duties with the new facilities, personally, they'll have a little bit more time and see if there's any efficiencies we can exploit in terms of transportation, maybe, pass the wider transportation issue. Because my understanding is that, in the past, that position was sort of a malarkey and hadn't really been able to, you know, run different scenarios to see if there was a different kind of, maybe, capital or should those plus-ing number of classes or whatever.
I'd be curious to see the absences in a calendar, like a monthly calendar, all. Have a, see if there are any patterns in there. And there you can be able to see if it's weather-related, or, you know, maybe perhaps an event around a holiday, or maybe something like that. Maybe see if some of these, not, it's not just a cluster of specific persons, the families that you might be, you know, in the industry for that.
We have that capability with our Skyrest information system. We can track that type of data. And as I said earlier, some of our principals are tracking that data. So, they may tell you that, you know, on a Monday, this number of students were absent, Friday, this number of students may be doing with the patterns of courses in school, you know, after a vacation, after a holiday, the day before a holiday. They can track that. You can also track, check around that during the winter. We, you know, we establish what days it's snow, what days, so we can do that. Another thing that we will also find is in the winter, is that if we have, in some cases, if it's an early dismissal, there'll be parents that will send their children in. they'll be parents that won't send it. So if it's, if it's a day where you haven't called a snow day, but there's snowing around, many times they won't send it. So weather does play a big part of it as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just do some quick numbers. You know, you, you, Dr. McGee, want to focus on the elementarys, but overall, just do some quick calculations. The chronic attendance here is 20%. The elementarys are 16%. Middle school are 20, and the high school is 26. So although the elementarys have, you know, they range within the elementary, you got as low as 13 to around 24, but they cover around 14, 15% overall. But you don't get the middle school, it jumps to 20. You get to the high school, it's 26 in this first one. So I'm not sure. I mean, it's got to be, it's a variety of things. You can say it's the vacation cycle in September or August, it's transportation. But I think we're going to have to carve that out a little bit more so that you can see the, what's going on. And we have the transience issue or the, just the makeup of the families, that can have a big impact on these numbers. But the number, the lack of attendance increases with grades. So you get to the high school, it's the highest, 26%. I mean, it's 10% more than the elementarys are. So if we focus on the one, something's happening in higher grades. And you get to the middle school, it's not even better, it's 20.
And what, what a lot of experts, so-called experts will say is, not that you don't want to focus on secondary, you absolutely do, K1, 2, 3, that, that's where those habits start. And if, if you can really put a lot of work into making sure that those habits never begin, or at least, I don't know, try to, you know, curb those habits when they're first, you know, K1, 2, 3, then the likelihood of, of as, as they get older and move across that continuum of grades, that they'll have established that, okay, going to school is important. I need to go to school every day unless I'm absolutely sick and I can't go to school. But we do. I mean, we're, we're focusing across the board, naturally. But we really have to look at, and even pre-K, because there are pre-K numbers in here as well that we have. And that, those pre-K numbers are our pre-K program at Hope here. But there are other pre-Ks, the pre-K programs in the city. There's Head Start, there are a variety of Head Starts. And if, in, 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 having anecdotal conversations with folks like Mary Barre from the Head Start in the Socket, there are a lot of pre-K students whose attendance is spotty. So if it's spotty there, how they're coming in kindergarten, and unfortunately, in many instances, those, those habits don't change. I will say this, and I, again, I had that nice conversation with Melissa Moniz today, we do have a group, Ms. Tereso is one of them, Ms. Moniz is another, who are looking at, we're looking at that transition from pre-K to K. And that's one of the data points that we're going to be looking at in addition to the curriculum. So that when we, before some of these pre-K students come to our district, we've had a chance to either have conversations with parents about the importance of attendance, because it literally starts when they're three years old in some cases. So...
So I would just like to emphasize what Vice Chair Borje said, and then piggyback that on something Andy Barnes once said. Because I, I just want to make sure that when, like, as you said, the experts talk about emphasizing the really junior grades, if they're looking at large cities like Chicago or any other large city, transitivity probably happens within the city, you know, even from one neighborhood to another. But one of the things that Andy Barnes once said is that here in the Socket, they work, they help the family out, and they move out, and they move out of the city, and another family moves right back in. Right? And so if we do have that high level of transitivity, we'll never establish those enduring habits for the people who remain here. And I think that's just something that needs to be at least considered. You know, great, we, we teach them great habits and they go to college and they never miss a day. And then another family moves right back in. And so, start over. And so I think, when looking at the data, I would just, you know, it would be interesting over time to see how many of the chronically absent kids tend to stay in the district. Because if they're constantly moving out, then I would say a wider array of efforts more important, focusing on improving people that leave. Any questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Borje. I'll think of the signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Posey, I'd say, if the school committee could interfere, Vice Chair Borje.
I'd just like to speak to one issue, which is Autumn Fest, which is coming very shortly. It's next week. It's going to take place from Friday, it's on Monday, October 5th to October 8th. It's early this year, about four or five days. Autumn Fest will be celebrating its 40th year, which is incredible. There will be a lot of family activities. There'll be a children's area. Obviously, the food court will be there, there'll be rides. But, you know, it's a time where you can come in as a family and really enjoy being part of this community. I know a lot of folks that come in from out of town. It's a once in, usually once a year, they come in just to take, take part in that weekend. And of course, the parade will be on, on Monday, on October 8th. Hopefully, as many of you can come out and, you can come out, we can celebrate our special, we are in the morality fellowship that we've held that weekend.
Mr. Gonzalez.
I just wanted to speak of a bullying incident that happened not at the school. It was someone on the way home. One of her students, she was on the way home. And I, the reason the issue has been handled out, but one of the parents was on Facebook and I saw a message where she believed that because it didn't happen in school property, that we would not care, not necessarily care, but be able to do anything to help the matter. And I just want parents to know that bullying is not, it's not allowed anywhere in our city. And if something happens, we actually were able to help this family because we worked together with her. But, but just because it doesn't happen on school grounds, it does not mean that we should not get more. I think it's very important that we were informed because we were able to find the people that were involved and, and bring the proper action. So I just, you know, in her mind, it didn't happen in school property, so they're not going to care. There's nothing they can do about it. But you'll never know if you don't share what's happening in our community with our students. As we work together, that's, that's totally important.
Thank you. Mr. Lima?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to say I heard they have a very important ban pending at the Autumn Fest parade this year.
I'm going to give you that idea.
Okay. Our Vice Chair Borje.
I am Grand Marshall.
Grand Marshall. I look forward to, before I bump on that, I should...
What?
I look forward to...
Who's that?
All right. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine. Seconded by Vice Chair Borje. Oh, if you ever see him, I'm saying aye. Aye. Posey, I'd say, if the meeting is...